All right, we're going to get started this night's forum. I'm Rose Suther. I am the president of the Holland Area League of Women Voters. I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight and spending a beautiful evening indoors, caring about your local issues. Thank you to the candidates for being here, taking time from your schedule, so you can share your views as it relates to your candidacy, so voters can make informed decisions. The League of Women Voters sponsors events like this because it does align with our mission to provide information to voters so that they can make informed decisions. People like you, we love to see here, who really care and want to know before you cast your vote. I'm pretty confident that everybody in this room is going to show up to vote during the upcoming election, but please remind your family, your friends, and your associates to vote. Absentee ballots are available now, and you can vote in person on November 4th. The League of Women Voters is strictly nonpartisan organization that has worked to inform voters and encourage civic engagement for over 100 years. The League never supports or opposes individual candidates. For more information about the League, including membership, please visit lwbholland.org or pick up a brochure at the table outside. Statements expressed by candidates are not endorsed or opposed by the League. Also, the League does not certify any candidate responses to questions as accurate. Voters are encouraged to fact-check the information shared at the forum. This forum was organized by our Voter Services co-chairs, Jan Dahlman and Anna Peralis. We also have several volunteers here helping. Our moderator for the forum is Claudia Berry, and our timekeeper is Gloria Goodwin. Questions for the candidates have been submitted by the public and the League members, and some of you when you entered were also handed in questions. So now, please turn off your cell phone and other electronic communication devices. No cameras or recorders are permitted, other than those authorized by the League. This program will be recorded and available for viewing in a few days on our YouTube channel. A link to our YouTube channel is on our website. Just look for the YouTube icon on the top-left corner of any page. The video is a property of the League of Women Voters of the Holland area. Neither video nor audio clips may be copied, edited, or used for any political advertising or other purposes. We ask members of the audience to listen respectfully and refrain from any comments or reactions as the candidates are speaking. There will be an opportunity to applaud the candidates at the end of the forum. Our moderator, Claudia Berry, will now introduce each candidate, outline the format, review the rules, and lead tonight's forum.
Good evening. Thank you, Rose. Tonight, we have the pleasure of these candidates running for Sagatuck City Council, and I will introduce them in alphabetical order, beginning at the end with Holly Anderson, then Jill Clark, Russ Gardner, John Mayer, and Sherri Tadaldi. We thank all of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum, and you all have received the rules of the forum in advance. Each candidate will make a two-minute opening statement. A question-and-answer period will follow the opening statements, and each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond to each question. Each candidate will have a two-minute closing statement at the end of the forum. As Rose said, our timer is Gloria Goodwin. Gloria, raise your hand so the candidates can see that you are there. She is the one you need to be watching. And she will give you a warning when you have 30 seconds remaining, and then when you see the stop sign, you need to stop, and wherever you were speaking. The order of who speaks first, second, will be determined initially by the alphabetical order of the candidate's last name, and will rotate after that. As Rose mentioned, we have received questions. As you've come in, we have received those. The League website has provided questions, and we also had questions posted on the League Facebook. While a question may be directed at one candidate, each candidate will have the opportunity to answer that same question. Questions of a personal nature will not be allowed, and I will reserve the right to interrupt a candidate if it is straying from the subject or making or engaging in personal attacks. As Rose mentioned, no camera, no taping is permitted, other than authorized by the League, and we are taping this, and it will be available for viewing on our YouTube channel if you want to view, or if you have people who could not come and they would like to see it. So, as a courtesy again to everybody, please make sure your cell phones are turned off, and we will begin. And we will begin with Holly Anderson with her two-minute opening statement. Holly?
Thank you. Thank you, Claudia, and thank you to the League and everyone who's here. My view of city government and city council is straightforward. We should work for the interest of the common good for all residents. That means ordinance that serve the community as a whole and enforced fairly, regardless of who you are or who you know. The common good is what keeps our community thriving. It's neighborhoods where our neighbors know each other, it's parks and natural spaces that make Sagatuck paradise, it's fiscal discipline, strong infrastructure, and quality city services, and it's a professional staff that does the hard work of running our city. Together, this allows neighbors, businesses, and tourism to thrive. The challenge, of course, is balance. That can be hard, but Sagatuck has proven that we can do hard things. A year ago, after much debate and with data from comparable tourist communities, we passed a 20% cap on short-term rental licenses in our dense residential neighborhoods, including the Hill, where 40% of homes have a license. And the cap is working. Licenses on the Hill are gradually declining. Home values remain strong, tourism is booming, and we still have plenty of places for people to stay. None of the chaotic catastrophes that were predicted have proven true. If re-elected, I will work hard to keep the cap in place. This matters because if either Jill Clark, Clark, or I lose, the pro-neighborhood majority of council will be gone, and our opponents will likely weaken or end the cap. I will also take the same pragmatic positive approach to other priorities: parking, infrastructure projects, and focusing on the fundamentals of good government for the common good. Thank you.
Jill?
Good evening. I want to thank all of you for coming as well, and thank the League for hosting this community event. My name is Jill Clark. By way of background, I am a retired technology executive and business owner, and have experience in engineering, executive leadership, finance, and operations, and have family ties to Sagatuck that go back over 100 years now. I'm proud to be one of your city council members, a planning commissioner, Cal Lake Authority Board member, and I also serve as a member of the Short Term Rental Task Force. I'm here tonight because I care for our community, and I just want to look back. My family and I value the small-town charm that the city brings, and I believe most residents share the same: a vibrant downtown, natural resources, parks, schools, neighborhoods, and a sense of community. We really have it all here. And I believe that as long as we preserve who we are, visitors will show up, and our town will continue to thrive. I believe we need to protect this community culture and improve the overall quality of life by putting our residents first. I support policies that defend our residential neighborhoods, including and especially keeping in place our short-term rental caps and regulations, investing in parks, green spaces, and protecting our natural resources, and working to reverse our declining full-term population. I also believe as we invest, we need to prioritize health and safety. We need safe corridors for bicyclists and pedestrians within the city, out to Old Beach, as well as connectors to Blue Star Trails. Aging lead pipe and water infrastructure need replacement. We need to slow down traffic on certain thoroughfares and offer better protections around outdoor dining areas and parade routes. And finally, I support good government. That means working collaboratively, being respectful and open-minded, listening to different points of view, maintaining fiscal responsibility, and putting the best interests of the voters first. I look forward to your questions tonight, and I also look forward to hearing the other candidate's point of view on subjects that concern all of us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Russ?
Hi, neighbors. Thank you and my fellow candidates for joining us tonight for this important Community Voters Forum. It's an honor and privilege to be here with you as we gather to discuss the future of our community. For those that know and don't know me, I encourage you to pick up a flyer. I welcome conversation with anyone. What I envision for this community and want to work towards is underlined by my deep connections to this town. I am part of a generational family, living in a generational home. I met my wife here, and like my parents, I raised my family here, and serving this town is something I hold dear in my heart. To start, it's important for me to state very clearly: I am not aware of, nor a part of, any organized effort to change the existing STR caps or regulations. What am I interested in? I'm interested in fixing what matters first, which is strengthening our infrastructure for our residents, business owners, and visitors. If I'm not re-elected, I will continue to work with my fellow council members to focus efforts on important, but sometimes mundane, things that need our collective attention, like neglected streets, safer sidewalks, Mount Baldhead Park, and a much-needed comprehensive, future-forward telecommunications strategy. One of the biggest assets I bring to this council is historical knowledge of this town, as I believe that informs where it's going. This is not to live in the past, but rather build, it's built to its future. To close, I thank the League of Women Voters for organizing and hosting this event, and to the Sagatuck Public Schools for allowing us to use their facility. I am an alumnus of the class of 1979 and a parent of a 2025 graduate. I consider the school students integral to our community. I support the school and their leaders, and I'm continuing efforts to make this institution the best academy for our kids, as it is one of the many jewels that we have in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. John?
Hi. I'd like to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting today. Thank you all for coming out as well. You all probably remember me from my musical career. But, no, just, my wife Vicki and I purchased our home here in 2012 after being regular tourists and visitors from the Chicago area since 1993. I've been a public servant my entire life in Illinois. I served 24 years as a firefighter, paramedic, retiring in 2010 as a deputy fire chief of operations. During that time, I also served three terms, elected to the city council of my community, two-year term on the Kane County Board and the Kane County Forest Preserve District as well. Since coming here, I pride myself in volunteering and part of the fire department, working through COVID inoculations in the different high schools throughout the COVID vaccines. Also, volunteer at the History Center and Hound Hospital along with the Christian neighbors. So, I believe it's everyone's role to give back a little bit to the community, and I look at this opportunity as another chance at doing that as well. I've been a part of cohesive boards, and I've been a part of divisive boards in my career, and cohesive boards work a lot better. I find it interesting, as I've been going around, that one of the biggest complaints that residents have is the divisiveness of the current board, and I also find it interesting that people are being told that I'm only running because I want to reverse the short-term rentals, which I have no idea where that came from. I'm not opposed to short-term rental caps, and I find that to be kind of disheartening to hear that being told about me. But anyway, my promise to the residents, if elected, is to be open-minded, to be a bridge builder, to be a listener, to try and work with community organizations, activists, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Sherri?
Hi, I'm Sherri Tadaldi. I built my house here in 1997. I have a long history in the area. I grew up in South Holland, so we were in Sagatuck most of the time, because it was a little bit more welcoming than it was in Holland for someone with an Italian last name. And I'm running because I am, I've been a banker for over 30 years, and numbers are my thing, budgets are my thing. I've been paying attention to the budget. The budget is healthy because we have a very high tax base. Unfortunately, I feel we're spending money in the wrong places, and that's why I'm running, one of the reasons. I want to dig into the budget, find out where our money is going, and try to bring some back. Right now, we're pulling 1.6 million from our reserves to meet the budget of this coming, this year that we're in, and that's certainly not sustainable. What will end up is we'll be raising taxes to cover projects in the future, and we, I certainly don't want that. I'm not sure you do either. The other reason I'm running is for ethics. Kudos to the council for putting it in ethics policy. I'm not entirely sure we're following it the way we should, but I would like to work on that as well. I intend to be a voice for every one of you. As far as short-term rentals go, you know, there's a cap, it's done. It's not my position to overturn it. My position is to get on top of the budget and the ethics. That is why I'm running. So, and I feel the same way John does. To have anyone say that about me, I don't know where that came from. It's just not true. That is not why I'm running.
Thank you, Sherri.
We will now, after the opening statements, begin the questions that have been submitted, and we will start with Jill. So you will get the first question. If elected to the city council, what would be your top priority in the next term?
Thank you for your question. As I'm sure my fellow council members here are aware of, and many of you, earlier this year, at the January timeframe, council put, went to great lengths to engage our community and to find out what was really important in people's minds, in terms of where we're going to spend our resources, both financially as well as manpower. And we have a good, you know, we really have a comprehensive list of things that we intend to get done. Now, having said that, you know, as we kind of move things around within the list, I look at that and I say, number one is always, you know, the health, safety, and well-being of our constituents. So, I look at what's on there, and immediately what comes to mind is what I said in my opening statement. We need to look for better ways to secure pedestrian and bicycle traffic throughout our town. And I think that doesn't mean looking at one street or another, but we do have some hotspots, number one being Park Street. So, we have to address that. There's a lot of traffic that goes to Old Beach. That's my number-one priority. From a policy perspective, again, I mentioned it during my open, you know, one of the threats the city and this community faces is our population decline. We have to find incentives and mechanisms and work to get our name out to attract more permanent residents into our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Russ, do you need me to repeat the question? What would be your top priorities in the next term, if elected?
Thank you. Top priority continues to be infrastructure. It's a word, I guess, thrown around quite a bit, but specificity is important here. Though we made some progress on infrastructure, Maple Street, Campbell Road, Father Francis intersection, et cetera, we've lost sight of what I think are other important, but sometimes mundane, things that need attention. Why has this happened? Council has too far off and focused on items that did not necessarily address resident concerns or improve the quality of life within the city limits. My focus going forward will be to fix what matters first. Here's a shortlist of items that have been given to me or I've observed personally in my time at the community. Spear Street boat ramp, northwest corner of Butler and Mary Streets, the street is falling in, Butler and Calder intersection is, had issues. The Griffith and Hoffman Streets stare, sidewalks that were ground down but have not been replaced or fixed. The chain ferry west side landing for public safety. I've heard stories from many residents over there about people, I'm surprised we have not gotten called as someone has been seriously injured or killed. Is that serious? Street ends, look down at the Hoffman Street at behind Coral Gables. Serious need of attention. The Calder Street parking lot retaining wall, damaged Water Mary Streets Frontier Box, Water Francis under U.S. Utility Bowl, Old Beach sites, Mount Baldhead parking lot. The list goes on of the things that most people don't think twice about, but really need our attention, and we focused on things that I do not believe value to the city. It's these items that need attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. John?
Well, I'm going to echo both Jill and Russ. In fact, infrastructure is at the top of the list, whether it's lighting. First time I came to one of these here and walked back down to Lucy Street with another couple, we couldn't see where we were walking, and we were commenting back then on how dark the streets are and sidewalks are, and how hazardous they are. You know, my street itself, Lucy Street, we have parking during the summer months and nowhere for people to walk when they're unloading their kids in the street and walking down without a sidewalk, and the list goes on, has been... So, I think what I'd like to see happen is prioritize what we're going to do and actually do it instead of putting stuff away in a folder and saying, we'll get to it next year or the following year. Park Street, certainly at the top of the list, as far as the gateway to why people come here, walking down to Old Beach, when they get off the chain ferry. From a safety perspective, trip hazards on the sidewalk, the fact that you still can't call or make a 911 call from Old Beach if there's something happening down there, all these things that just seem to never get finished. So, make a list, prioritize, and start tripping away at it so people can see results. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Sherri?
My first priority, my top priority, will be to learn about the budget and try to trim where we can so that we have the money to do important projects such as infrastructure. And I agree with you all. Park Street is the road to the jewel of Sagatuck, Old Beach. That needs to be addressed. There are people walking dogs, walking, riding bikes, and we need to make sure it's safe for everyone. I need to dig into the budget to see where we can cut it, but my first blush thoughts are attorney fees. We're doing studies. We're hiring people to make decisions for us when we've got so many super smart people here. All of you neighbors have skills and we should be utilizing. We don't have to spend money on all of these studies. We've got people here who can help lead us and bring us where we need to be and trim the budget. Our taxes are so high, we need to see what we can do to have those taxes go to things that benefit more of, more of the people who live here. So, that's my priority.
Thank you, Sherri. And Holly?
Thank you. So, I'm going to start with a process priority because it's central to our planning. Every, I think it's November, early December, we send out a survey to all residents to ask you what your priorities are, and we take that information, and then city council spends the better part of the day talking about it and looking at what you're telling us, what we know sort of from the experience that we've had, but really basing everything in what we hear from you. And from them come the priorities. Based on what we've heard last year, and actually, this is, this is, this year, this is for your priorities, it's on our website, and it's a really handy guide. Parking is a huge priority for this year, and we've appointed a task force. We're looking at a consultant who can work with them. The reason to hire somebody for this is that there are a lot of different moving parts. It's, you know, how many spaces do we have? How are they striped? What happens if you do? And I'm not saying any of these are going to happen, but what are all the options from restriping to maybe selective meters someplace? And then, you know, take it from there. Infrastructure clearly is a number-one priority. I think everybody's touched on some of those. Many of the things that Russ talked about are on this list, but Maple Street, Elizabeth Street, Park Street, those are all hard, big projects, and they're at the top of the list. And then, finally, I am concerned about changes that would erode the cap. Both Mr. Gardner and Ms. Tadaldi, in public meetings, have talked about wanting to change the cap.
Thank you. The first, the next question will begin with Russ, and we're going to take a question that was submitted, Russ, that said, "Compared to other cities like Douglas, Holland, South Haven, do you believe the city is more or less business-friendly? And if so, what will you do to make it or change it?"
I've had, I've had numerous conversations with business owners in this town, and I've also had some conversations with citizens. The perception is that the city is not business-friendly. And when I've asked what they mean by business-friendly, the response they get is, it's not a welcoming community when they go into city hall. They find it difficult to reach city employees, and when they ask questions, they get different answers from different city employees. Now, that's not uncommon, but this is something that I think the city needs to be aware of and needs to focus on. And the way that I would address this, and it's been done in the past, I've been a part of these efforts in the past, is have a meeting with the business owners. They're not all going to come, but ask them to come, offer some refreshments, that usually gets people to the table, and ask them what their experience is in town, what, make it a safe environment for them to tell us what their experience has been with the city, and where the city can help them better perform and make it a more welcoming community for them to do business and new businesses. Sagatuck has never usually had a problem getting new businesses in town. There are a few more empty storefronts this season than I've seen in the past, and that could be, you know, that could be cyclical, but the city has a responsibility to engage with the business community, and I know a lot of times when that doesn't happen is because, well, they don't vote here. Well, the fact of the matter is, they're part of my community, they're my neighbors, and we should have more conversations, more formal conversations with them, with the city.
Thank you, Russ. John, do you need me to repeat the question?
Please.
Compared to other cities like Douglas, Holland, South Haven, for example, do you believe the city is more or less business-friendly? And if one or the other, how would, what would you do to change it?
I think, first of all, I wouldn't have any clue as to how businesses are treated in those communities by their leadership, because that's another government, but in speaking with people that run businesses in our community, there is frustration sometimes, whether it's, you know, improving the property that they have around their businesses. I think, as Russ pointed out, having an open meeting to address the issues that are out there from the business owner's perspective is a start. Certainly zoning laws and things can be worked with to address different issues for the different businesses, depending on the type of business they are. I find that restaurants, we've been very cooperative with the restaurants in adding parking or outside seating during COVID, and I think that's been something that's been successful and seems that the visitors enjoy that, the businesses appreciate the effort to allow that to occur. So, that's probably a win-win for the city, but there are other instances where businesses have complained that they've made changes or they've had things outside their shops where they've tried to fix things that are in the easement or are part of the city, and that's been ordered to stop, that they're doing, and change or not do it. So, I think the first thing is to meet with the businesses and try to put together a plan, see what issues they have and what they don't have.
Thank you, John. Sherri?
I think that we should be saying to every business in town, "How can we help you?" That's what we need to do. We are not a 12-month community. We have a shorter span of opportunity for our businesses here, and they need to capitalize on those times when we're busy. I know that we should be working toward becoming busier year-round, and that's been tried, and maybe there's something that we can do to do that, but for the time being, we've got to help our businesses survive during the winter. January, February, maybe even March are not great, so we need to find out what those businesses need to thrive, and we need to help them in any way we can. I don't think we have DDA like Douglas does. I don't know if that's helpful, similarly to John. I'm not sure what other communities... I'm not sure what other communities do, but we have some of the best restaurants and some of the best retail shops around. We need to keep those businesses here. We need to support them in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Holly.
Yeah, I think we can always do a better job listening to businesses, to residents, to each other. So, but I think one of the things we're looking into now is that for years the city's had a bunch of ordinances and we haven't enforced them. And that's, you know, kind of across the board. And I think, you know, there was some favoritism if you knew the right people or if you were kind of new in town, it might have been a little bit easier to get things done. And I truly do believe if we have ordinances, enforce them or change them. And I think as we listen, if there are ordinances or areas where businesses are feeling pinched by the city, absolutely, let's listen. But then, you know, change the ordinances or change our policies. I, you know, businesses are, I mean, we've got a great home ground businesses here and I do think we need to keep them here. But I think, I think it's somewhat overstating to say that we're not friendly. In fact, I think Russ was on Mike Johnson's a little bit ago and he was making that point and they were teasing him, kind of to the effect of, oh, which is, and Mike, of course, is famous for putting cones to where people want to park. And we're not letting people do that now. And it's really to be fair for all residents and certainly.
Thank you, Audrey. And finally, Joe.
Yeah, thank you. Well, there's no doubt that the business community is, you know, important to who we are in Sagatuck, right? And I don't know in a council that doesn't understand this and respect businesses. And we all want them to succeed, right? Because if they succeed, it makes our town stronger. You know, I've talked to some business owners and the messages that I get, really twofold, right? Kind of contrasting. One is banner year, right? Heavy tourists, a lot of, you know, and you can see it if you walk around our town in the middle of the summer, right? And second was fixed parking. Now, does that mean that there aren't other business owners out there or there's a perception that the city's not friendly? Okay, you know, perception is reality, right? And I'll agree with Councilman Gardner. You know, how far the city goes, I absolutely think that, you know, we should welcome them. Come to our council meetings, talk to us, engage, right? We go out and talk to them, right? So I think there's a lot of different ways we can bridge the gap if they're, you know, understand what it is. But what I'm hearing more and more is, we want you to fix parking, we can't get our employees out in front. That's the common complaint I'm hearing. We can't park our employees. You know, people are frustrated because they can't park in town, they don't want to take shelves, so on and so forth. So I think that, you know, we can do a couple of things, right? We can be more inclusive and get them engaged. Some of our council meetings and share, they have frustration, share the same planning commission, right? Okay, thank you.
I'm going to stop just a minute because, you know, you're gathering a lot of questions over there.
Yes, I have one more coming.
Because I'd like Tina to sort through them to make sure we're not getting too many.
Let me give you the ones that I have here.
So if you'll allow Jane to walk in front of you to bring you us the questions.
Oh, we've got one more. Hold on. Hold the press.
You're generating questions as you talk, I can just tell that.
Well, that's why I'm standing here.
Okay.
Excuse me, folks. I'll probably have to do this again.
Always good to see you, Jane.
Well, thank you.
I am going to start this question with John. And John, this one is still going to be on some development thoughts. I would like for the members up here, the candidates, to share your thoughts on development versus protecting our area's natural resources.
Well, as far as landlocked, we don't have a lot of developable space in town still because it's pretty much built out. But I do see one issue that I think is important is the removal of, or the re-graduation of the older part of town where smaller cottages are being removed and giant homes are being put in and people are here two times a year and nobody's in the house. And that adds to the whole situation of us not having residents here year-round. You know, it's an attractive place and people buy a lot and tear down a house and put up a new house. And I think that's a developmental issue that we need to look at as far as board initiative as we go forward. The natural space is what brings people here. Our beach, our dunes, those areas, I think we have made that a priority to protect those areas. I think we should continue in that process and have a balance between protecting those areas that we need to maintain and keep our small town charm, but also looking at our residential areas and seeing what we can do about controlling the redevelopment of places along, both in town and along the river as well. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Sherry.
Well, John hit the nail on the head. We don't have that much green space that can be gobbled up anymore. That belongs to our neighbors. The city of Douglas, I believe, the township has a lot of green spaces to develop. We have, we have many parks that are wonderful and like I said, Oval Beach is the crown jewel of Sagatuck. And I would, of course, protect anything like that. Oval Beach, any of the parks are important, the green space is important, but I don't think that we have the same issues that, for example, the township has and Douglas. They're going to be building some affordable, more affordable housing, so that's a plus. I don't think we have, we have affordable housing here on Maple Street. There's some affordable housing in Douglas already. So I'm not sure that that's a huge issue for us, so, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Holly.
Yeah, thanks. I pretty much agree with a lot of what's been said. We don't have a lot of property to develop apart from the old airport property now called Sagatuck Wilds, which is actually located in the township. We did put the, there was a conservation easement, don't fund a conservation easement that we put in place this year. Not everyone supported that on council, both council member Peterson and Gardner voted against that. But it was a great way to ensure that, it's in Everveen, so it's not buildable, that fragile space was protected for generations. So I was a big fan of that and a big proponent. In terms of development, I think we just, we need to encourage people to develop responsibly and especially around trees. I think many of us are brokenhearted to drive by the Catholic Church and see the clear cut for the development there. I understand that we need to develop houses and this isn't done with, so I'm speaking to another community. But it just, it's heartbreaking to see it just bare and I, you don't have to do that to develop. So I think responsible development, that considers green space. I do agree too that in terms of our housing, there's a, you know, losing the old cottages and the character of our homes with new houses is concerning. It really makes us look like any other town.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Joe.
Yeah, I pretty much agree with everyone up here in terms of, you know, seeing, seeing the amount of space available within the city when it's going down, you know, constantly, consequently slowing down some of the building. But, you know, when it comes to natural resources and protecting them, I mean, it's, you know, and our people is probably one of the biggest assets we have, you know, in the city, right? It certainly, you know, accounts for attracting a lot of visitors that come into town. So there are things we can do and there are things that we've done. Waterfront preservation is a zoning ordinance that we passed this year. Zoning worked very hard to, you know, make sure that we're protecting the use of the water, limit building and whatever limited available space that's out there. There is, the city actually was quite vocal about defending, putting in a boat ramp and a marina at the mouth of the river. Now, that's not on city property, but the principle's the same, it's defending our natural resources. And I think the city should look up for it too, join with other communities to make sure that they're doing their part to defend our natural resources, whether it's the water flow that comes into our town or any of the other green spaces. And then finally, which is kind of a plug, we're going through a master plan right now in master planning exercise inside a zoning. This is a great opportunity for the community to come in and weigh in on issues like gentrification in some of our older neighborhoods and helping preserve the character because it's, I'm telling you right now, it's a topic that's come up and we've discussed quite frequently. So please, if you haven't taken the survey, do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. And finally.
Yes, excuse me. Thank you. And there's survey cards out on the table, I grabbed them on the way out. You know, I find it quite ironic that we have over several questions now said, well, I agree with the person next to me or the person down the table. Where the heck is all this devices and this coming from? I don't understand it. I've been in this town long enough to see build outs on property within the city that I remember as a kid, be like, no one's ever going to build there. So that just demonstrates the value of this community to people that would like to live here and of course advances in technology and architecture. But where I think it's important, as been mentioned by some of the other candidates, is that we need to be very protective of the cottage look that the city has. The city does have a historic district commission. I see that our chairman of the historic district commission is here this evening. I serve at that commission with pride. We are very careful about protecting that character of our community. The homes that you're seeing that are going up are outside of the current historic district limits. So to control any of this has to do with zoning, has to do with lot size setbacks, and we have to be sure that those are reflecting what our community would like. Our parks are protected because they're public property. They will not be developed unless they're allowed to be developed, as in the past. I will protect that to my best ability. We are Tree City USA and agree with the tree. You know, trees are very important to this community. And I believe that our zoning ordinances protect public right-of-way trees, but do not protect trees that are private property could be something we could be looking at.
Thank you, Russ. Thank you all. Our next question, I will start with Sherry. Do you want to see any changes to the current cap on short-term rentals? And if so, what would the change be?
Thank you. That's a wonderful question. Caps are, it's a done deal. The caps are in the book. I did not agree with the way it was handled. I think that we had some strong arming involved with the short-term rental task force. What I don't agree with first and foremost is, I'm a mortgage banker. If I at Fifth Third Mortgage had a mortgage on your property and you wanted to put it into your trust to protect yourselves and to give it to your children for whatever purpose, if you want to put your home in a trust and you have a short-term rental certificate, you will lose that certificate. So what we're telling families is to take a hike, that we make the rules and you have to abide by them. The state doesn't increase your property taxes when you have a transfer into a trust. Why would we make that an issue? Things like that really bother me. And I understand that short-term rental people are getting stickers on their garbage cans. Is my garbage can less offensive than a short-term rental garbage can? I left my garbage can out for four days twice just to see. I didn't get a sticker. Why was that? That's not fair. I want to see it be fair and equitable to everyone.
Thank you, Sherry. Holly.
Yeah, I agree with Sherry that if we're putting stickers on some people's garbage cans, we should on everyone. And just a quick correction on, so as long as the ownership doesn't change, you can change the form of ownership with the short-term rental. So if I, Holly Anderson, individual has a short-term rental property and I want to put it into Holly Anderson LLC and I remain sole owner, that's totally fine. In fact, that was a great change that council did to make sure that there were no issues with that. So I think some of the, I'll just raise the issues we're having, questions that we're having around short-term rentals. One is around generational transfers. So we have never let people pass on their short-term rental certificate when they pass away or sell the house. And the issue we're facing now on the Hill is that we are way over our cap. We started the cap, we started a year ago with 40% short-term rental license, we only have, the cap is 20%. So it's going to be a while before we get below the cap. I, you know, my hope is that we stick with it because if we can get the attrition in licenses, we will have room in the cap. And also there are other ways for people to rent a home they inherit. They can long-term rent it and lord knows, we need long-term rentals in town. It's a great way to monetize that investment until we have caps available. Also, short-term rental, you can, or longer-term rental starts at one month, so people have the opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Holly. Joe.
Yeah, thank you. You know, when I said, and on the short-term rental task force, by the way, not aware of any strong arming, you know, I think it was a great group of people that were all concerned in one thing. It wasn't caps, it wasn't short-term rentals, it was making sure that we were looking out for the best interests of the city. And there were a lot of great opposing views, right? There was opposing view of the economy, of the businesses, of homeowners and even so far as property owner rights, right? So a lot of things were digested. But at the end of the day, right, the most valuable piece in my mind that came out of that exercise was reaching out to the public. And we did so with service, right? And allowing the public to come in and tell us what they were seeing and what they were feeling. And I would say to say that the public demanded that the caps get put in place, that enough was enough, that the city let it go for way too long. So as being a council member, I feel like I'm acting on the will of the people when I say that the caps need to stay in place. And I don't see changing them right now. I think it's working. We really haven't seen a drop in housing turnover or tourism. We need to give it some time though, right? And as Mayor Anderson mentioned, we have made some adjustments to the policy. I think they were smart, they were the right thing to do. And maybe we'll make some going forward, but for now I think we stay the course and, you know, we can work at it down the road a little bit after we get a little bit more data.
Thank you, Joe. Russ.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Do you want to see any changes to the current short-term rental caps? And if so, what would you change?
As I said in the opening statement, I'm not aware of nor a part of any organized efforts to change the existing STR caps. Having said that, the effort to regulate, which I supported wholeheartedly and addressed STRs as necessary and commendable. But as we've seen and has been mentioned by other folks at the table tonight, we're in danger of, some people are losing, are in danger of losing the value of generational homes and are unfairly losing STR licenses due to processes that need improvement. This has been discussed in open council sessions. The city needs to ensure that all our ordinances are fair and are reviewed regularly when situations like this occur so that they reflect current community expectations and to address unexpected intentions. I feel that we've taken meaningful steps such as implementing licensing requirements, occupancy limits and enforcement mechanisms to mitigate the negative impacts of STRs while still allowing property owners to participate in the terms of economy. My primary concern regarding STRs at this point though is the extent to which they contribute to division within our community. I've been in this community for my entire life and the only time I remember divisiveness like this was back in the 90s when human rights ordinances were an issue. I've never seen divisiveness like this and it really, it saddens me about this community. And I'm very disappointed to see how members of a community have used it as a wedge issue and suggested that residents need to fear certain council members and candidates. It's an issue that concerns all of us, it concerns me, it's still an issue as you hear from a candidate, can't comment. Let's work on something we can all live with to protect our neighborhoods and our church.
Thank you, Russ. John, do you need me to repeat the question?
It's always difficult to go last because everybody's already answered. So, you know, it is the law of the land, it's been in place for a year or so. Just like any other ordinance, after a time, I guess, you look at things and should be mature enough to look at it and say, something's working, something's not working, let's revisit it if we need to and talk about it and see what things we can improve or change or leave it alone, whatever the flavor of the group turns out to be. One thing that I don't, I have concern about is perceived inequity where physically the home beside me is, faces Butler Street and for example, they're not in the zone, so this doesn't apply to them because like apply to them because, like, houses on Lake Street or houses on Butler Street in between Bed Breakfast that are existing commercial properties, there's residential homes, and they're exempt from the ordinance. If it's gonna be fair for everybody, then why should those people not be affected by it, but other people are? So I think it's something that's worth looking at and whatever explanation is given for that, I think I would follow it, but I think it's something that needs to be addressed. There are a lot of properties involved in between that this doesn't apply to. And the premise of this was to be fair to everyone, and I think that's what we should do.
Thank you. Holly, the first, this question will be yours. How important do you feel collaboration with Douglas and Sagatuck Township is? And do you have any ideas for collaboration?
I think it's really important, and I think for the most part, our three communities have really good relationships. I know Mayor North and I get together regularly and talk, share information, and the township is also good at sharing information. I think our city managers all work well together. The one thing I will say I was really disappointed about, though, with the tri-communities was the tri-community master plan, which the three communities have done jointly at least twice. That master plan's done every 10 years, and as Joe mentioned, we're working on ours now. I was hopeful that all three communities would come together to do that because we are, we're different, we have different, you know, land use, for example. I mean, you know, we don't have land, township and Douglas do. We have a lot of common issues. And unfortunately, both Douglas and the township decided to go alone. We are going on alone. I'm hoping as we all get our solo plans done, we can come together to look at things like, are we addressing affordable housing? Are we addressing transit? Are we, you know, addressing climate issues that are coming our way? Because, you know, we are really one group, even though we're three municipalities.
Thank you, Holly. Joe?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yes. How important do you feel collaboration with Douglas and Sagatuck Township is? Do you have any ideas for collaboration?
Well, it's critical, actually. I mean, we're one, we're one large community, right? Three separate entities under. We share a common water and sewer infrastructure. It's governed by a separate authority, but we have facilities that frankly, even from a financial perspective, are gonna need to be addressed that we share, right? So there's, there's a need, right, just looking at it from that perspective. More importantly, and I think the subject came up before, we share the natural resources of this area. So we better be a lockstep on how we're gonna protect those natural resources and make sure that our community remains strong. So, and third, you know, we, we have a little bit of an economic ecosystem in that we share tourism across each one of those communities as well, whether that's, you know, visiting shops in Douglas, whether that's, you know, consuming homes out in the township. So I don't think we have a choice other than to have a good working relationship with them, and I think we do. We're welcome.
Thank you. Russ?
Well, there's already examples in our town. I agree that this is critical. There are examples in our community of cooperation in the utility committee that Councilman Clark and I are currently serving on, Sagatuck Township Fire Department, the library, Cal Lake Sewer and Water Authority. I would suggest that we find ways to continue to work with the township. See one of our township commissioners here this evening, two actually, two of our township commissioners here this evening. They have interest in our community as we do in theirs. And I've said all along, as goes the township in Douglas, so does Sagatuck, and vice versa. What we don't do very effectively is manage those relationships. I have the formal relationships with many of the people on boards in Douglas and in township, but what we don't have is formal communication. We don't sit down and talk except to the utility committee, our current effort. I'd like to see us do more of that. Because there are opportunities to collaborate, and there's a number of questions on the master plan survey which allude to this. We have tried consolidation in the past, that was a hot potato issue. The communities are different, but each has their own kind of culture, as well as people choose to live in the different communities for different reasons, and that should be respected. But from municipal standpoint, there are certainly opportunities we should be looking at very organized to find ways to better communicate and collaborate between each other. We like each other, we go to each other's towns, so let's find ways to work better together as governments.
Thank you, Russ. John?
I would agree with what's been said so far in that, you know, using the fire department as a model, I think it serves all three communities wonderfully and open communication between the three entities, sets budgets, goals. It's something that we should follow as far as our community goes. We don't live in a bubble in Sagatuck, obviously. Everything that happens in the township affects us. Development on the perimeter of our city affects us. Whether or not our input would change anything that this township decides to do or Douglas decides to do, I don't know if that's possible or not, but I think keeping the lines of communication open, discussing what master plan ideas are there for the township, Douglas, and ourselves, where we have commonalities, where we have conflict, and try to figure out the best way to address those things and work together towards a common good for our resources and our infrastructure would be great.
Thank you, John. Sheri?
Collaboration with our neighbors is very important, and we have to do that. And I think for the most part, we're doing it very well. We have schools, we have the grade school in Douglas and the high school in Sagatuck, and we've been able to handle that very well. My concern is we've had so much staff turnover, it's difficult to keep working with someone in other communities and then lose that person who was representing the city and then have another person come in. We have such divisiveness, as was mentioned on our council. My concern is, will there be divisiveness between our community and other communities? We have to get past that. We have to work together for the good of all of the communities. We all serve all the tourists and the people who live here, and we need to continue that. We need to make our priorities aligned.
Thank you, Sheri. The next question will go to Joe. In regards to a growing and sustaining a full-time population, what are your views on second and third homeowners? They contribute the tax, however, kids are not in school, lights not on in the year. How do they fit into a plan?
Well, I mean, I, you know, I started coming to Sagatuck when I was three days, three days old. My mother brought me up here, and it was into a second home up on the hill. The house is still in the family, and, you know, if you had come to me when I was 12 or whatever, after I was a young adult or even my present age, right, and you had told me that I don't count because I'm a second homeowner, then I would be very upset and rightfully so. So they do play an important part, you know, into our community, not just economically, right? I mean, yes, the tax, they pay more in taxes even though they don't share that, you know, the benefit of the school. But, you know, they are part of our community and they are important, right? And I do believe, as I again, go back to my opening statement, I do believe this town needs to grow its resident population because it's been in decline, and that is important. We have to work our way through, as a council, working together to come up with some creative ideas in how we can do that. Follow the CDB model, right? They know how to reach out to all across the nation and the world for that matter. Let's figure it out. Let's promote Sagatuck as a great place to live. Let's figure out a way to subsidize some of these homes that are empty and try and get some long-term rentals in there, right? To give people a vehicle to get into our community and ultimately get them into homeownership as a permanent resident. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Russ?
This is a great question. Councilman Clark reminded me of, I was brought to my home here in Sagatuck from the old Douglas Community Hospital, two days after I was born on Mary Street in what is now the Winslow kind of vehicles. So thank you for the reminder. Second homes have been a part of our community as long as I've been a member of being a town, since I've been a resort community. The changes that have taken place have been a result of financial and economic changes. The homes in our city were built, many of them were built back in the day when smaller homes were the de jour. Many of the homes that I know today were family homes when I was growing up. Economics have changed the availability of homes in town. Where I really think we're missing the boat, and I've had some conversations with some around short-term rentals around this and the caps that were in place, if the goal is to increase the number of primary homeowners in town, we have to actively work on that. And what that means is that means coalescing around what is our vision for the mission, what is our position for the community? Let's ask our folks, is that really what the entire town wants? And if we do, how are we gonna get there? Engage with real estate companies, engage with our business community, engage with our homeowners, engage with the CDB. How do we attract the people that we want to have live here? We've had families move in town, there's been a few of them, but what are we actively doing to meet the goals that we think we have?
Thank you, Russ. John?
Could you repeat?
Sure. In regards to growing and sustaining a full-time population, what are your views on second and third homeowners? They contribute the tax base, however, kids are not in school, lights not on year-round. How do they fit into this plan?
Well, I think in many cases, second homeownership, for me, it became primary homeownership. I think a lot of people come here with a second home and end up moving here permanently at some point. As far as keeping the lights on during the winter, last year in July, my wife passed away and I spent the winter here by myself, and most of my neighbors went south for the winter, and it was pretty damn quiet. So, you know, it's a double-edged sword. There are people who live here year-round, but they're not here, the lights aren't on, and they're gone in the winter as well. So they're not generating revenue to the restaurants and things like that as well. As far as bringing kids into the neighborhood, I, that's such a tough task to try and accomplish something of that nature in the community here with the pricing of the houses that we have. But we probably should do a better job of selling our school because we have a wonderful school, and that would be something that we might be able to get that message out and attract students and kids to come here, families for the educational benefits of our school.
Thank you, John. Sheri?
Attracting a full-time population has been a quest of this community for many years. Many generations have tried to tackle this problem and we're still trying to tackle it. We're popular, and that's great. People want to live here. And just as John said, a lot of people come here buying a second home and then improving it and then moving here when they retire. We have an older population, and that's okay. We would sure love to have kids, more kids in school, more kids in the community. I don't know if it's affordable for families to be here. One thing, though, I did want to mention, the non-home-studded properties in town bring in almost $7 million a year in taxes. The non-homes, or the home-studded properties bring in 2.8 million. So we value the second homeowners. We appreciate the money that they pay to keep our schools open. I'm concerned that if we lose some of this money, we're going to, we're gonna suffer with our schools. And we are spending our money in different places, other, at this time, to, like I said, studies and the like. So I think we should try, but I'm not sure how it will happen. We've lost, we've lost the American Twist, we've lost Lloyd J. Harris, and we've lost Haywood. Those were our anchors.
Thank you, Sheri. Holly?
Yeah, just a couple of quick factoids. If we had, I think it's 24 or more students, we would capture the amount of money where we would lose from the non-home-studded properties. So it's not a huge thing. And Sheri, a lot of that non-homestead money is commercial property, so we'll keep a lot of that, but in terms of housing, we don't need that many more students. You know, people say when people and families can't afford to live in Sagatuck, but of course, that's not true. There are lots of people in Holland who send kids to schools, and they have houses that are every bit as expensive as ours, and Zeeland is the same. I think, you know, I think the place to start is to channel what the CDB has done with tourism. I mean, they have done a phenomenal job bringing tourists here with really creative campaigns. Let's sell our schools. I mean, we have, you know, we have some of the best schools in the state and in the country. How do we, you know, partner with the real estate community with, you know, the various publications? I don't know how to do that, but there are people who do, and I think we can market this town. In terms of second homeowners, of course, I mean, they've, it's always been something here. It's how a lot of us, a lot of people have gotten here, not me, but a lot of people, and that will always be an important mix. And I think as we start getting more families in, especially to some of the homes that are short-term rental, that will help.
Thank you. This question will go to Russ. What is the city's plan to protect our neighbors during this political climate with immigrants, trans, LGBTQIAT, black, brown, Asian, Indian, and non-Christian people?
I've been in this community for my entire life. This town has always been welcoming to everybody. There's never been a time that I've ever felt that people didn't welcome visitors, summer visitors, the gay community has always been, Sagatuck has always been a gay-friendly community for various reasons, and that has not changed. We do not have a very diverse ethnicity in town. It's been that way for as long as I can remember. That's just the nature of Sagatuck, and the area is actually, West Michigan is not very ethnically integrated. But I would suspect that if someone of color or someone of an American family or whatever would choose to live in Sagatuck, to be welcomed, just like I see everybody else welcomed to this community. What it comes down to me is that the city council just needs to continue to do its job to make sure that the town is safe, that it's welcoming, but it comes down to me as a neighbor, it comes down to me as a community member, say, welcoming. When someone comes next door, a short-term rental, if there are people of color which you got next door, it doesn't matter to me. I'll walk over and say hi. It's your first time in Sagatuck, welcome to town. That's how I do it. That's the community that I built and that I saw my parents build, I saw my grandparents build and their parents before them. I am just passing along what I've learned in terms of what the culture of Sagatuck is and that's welcoming to anybody. It's individual responsibility to make that happen.
Thank you, Russ. John?
Well, one of the reasons that my wife and I chose to come to Sagatuck was the welcoming nature and diversity of the community. Both my parents were immigrants that came to this country and taught me to respect and love everyone, and I follow that rule today, and I can be responsible for what I do and welcome people when they come to the community. And part of being on council, reiterate that as I go forward and try to do my part to make it as welcoming a community as possible.
Thank you, John. Sheri?
I was raised in Holland, Michigan, and with the last name of Tidaldi, I was, I was not treated so well sometimes. I tried Vander Tidaldi, but that didn't work. I tried. But this has never been an issue in the city of Sagatuck that I'm aware of, and if it is, I hope we do address it and address it with force because this community, to the best of my knowledge, welcomes everyone. And that's the way it should be for all communities. Unfortunately, it's not, but hopefully, we're leading the way. I think we are diverse, and I think that's wonderful.
Thank you. Holly?
Yeah, I will disagree somewhat with everyone. When the Human Rights Ordinance was coming up in Sagatuck, actually, there was quite a bit of divisiveness then around the LGBTQ community. There were restaurants who wouldn't serve gays and lesbians, you know, shops weren't welcoming. So I think we need to be a little clearer about our past. I think it's a lot better, but there's still some pushback from people, you know, people complain about flying the Pride flag. So we are, we are imperfect there. There's still a ways to go. I think my bigger worry is less within our town, but just the hatred of anyone who's different nationally. And what do we do when we start to see that come to town? I pray it doesn't, but on the path we're on. And so I think that's when all of us have to unite as one and push back in whatever ways we can, whether it's showing up for marches, whether it's writing whether it's showing up for marches, whether it's writing letters, whether it's just refusing to be there, helping our neighbors who might be subject to that because we're in a very scary time right now and we need each other and our neighbors now more than ever.
Thank you, Holly. Joe?
Well, I say this in our council meetings all the time and I have to follow very much. No, I have to follow. Actually, I think everyone's making some really good points here. You know, I like to think I've learned a lot over my life. I've traveled all over the world, seen a lot of different towns and countries and I've always been drawn back here. And I will say that, you know, there are problems nationally and globally, right? Unfortunately, hate is on the rise and people are looking at that in any way that they can, it seems. So it's very disturbing. But I always come back to Sagatuck and I always think Sagatuck is, you know, a very welcoming community. Going back into the, as long as I can remember, it's always been a welcoming community. Not that it doesn't have its faults, not that there aren't issues out there and I think we need to do better. We always can. And from a council perspective, I think, you know, we need to make sure that we keep that as one of our core values and I intend to do that if elected, as I'm sure everyone else up here is because we're committed to making this town the best town there is in this country.
Thank you, Joe. This will be our final question before we do your closing comments. And the question is, and we will start with John. What is Sagatuck's greatest strength? And what is its greatest weakness?
Greatest strength? I guess the greatest strength would be the wonderful environment that we live in as far as our beaches, our waterfronts, the people who are here. You know, after living in the community that we lived in for 30 some years and moving here and being here for seven years, I might get emotional, but being welcomed and through my wife's sickness, I cannot tell you how many people I never knew before would come over and bring food and meals and take care of us through that. It just reminded me of the warmth and wonderfulness of the people of this community and in some weird way, I look at this as an opportunity to give back to the community. Weakness, I wish we would stop the infighting. We just talked about it on a national perspective, but as I have been walking around the community, I keep hearing from people, we're tired of the divisiveness on the board. We're tired of the nitpicking and the rolling of eyes and the sighs and the body language when somebody doesn't agree with you. We gotta do better than that and that's my promises to this group here tonight.
Thank you. Sheri?
No, I'm sorry. Yes, Sheri. I think I got goofed up here.
Oh, you're good.
So I think our greatest strength is the people. That is our greatest strength here. We've got a really smart, diverse community who are capable of leading if we listen. And that's the key. I want to listen to people. You know, we've got several issues that we're not on the same page with, but it doesn't matter what I want. What matters is what you all want, what taxpayers want. Every tax dollar matters and we have to pay attention to that. Then that relates to the greatest weakness and I have to agree. People in town are completely sick of some of the behaviors, some things that have happened on city council. They're disgusted and we have to get back to where we have, we put our town first, our people first and figure things out and get along. That's what we're all about. That is Sagatuck. Sagatuck is a welcoming community and all aspects need to be welcoming.
Thank you, Sheri. Holly?
Yeah, for me, it's the community, it's, we know our neighbors, it's the beautiful outdoor space and it's just a great small town by regards. I'm not, the weakness though, I think we've all bought into this narrative of divisiveness and I'm going to challenge that. If you go to our city council meetings or watch them, there's very little divisiveness. We, everybody has a voice. I think for the most part, we listen well to each other. In most instances, we actually all vote together, we all approve a bunch of it. We mostly vote in unison. There are some areas where we've been different. Short-term rentals is one, the airport conservation easement. We had some differences over technology, you know, what the plan was. You know, Russ didn't want to go with wifi at Oakley, wanted a tech plan. But, you know, this is all sort of, that's good government. We shouldn't always agree. That would be scary. And I think really our meetings, I mean, I have worked very hard as mayor to be inclusive and to give everyone a voice and I think everyone on council has bought into that. And so I think it's social media and I think it's people who want a drama or whatever, but I don't think it's the city council members. We might not all like each other, but I think we want to live all together. And so I just want to call BS on that one.
Thank you. Holly? Joe?
Holly? There's no question, the greatest asset our city has is the people that live here, right? And make us a community. And, you know, and I'm not going to say that our biggest threat is losing those people. It is, right? But I think, you know, I think there's some other, you know, challenges that we have to be aware of as a community. And let me just give you one example, right? And I'm not sure quite how to say this without being offensive to somebody, but, you know, we have to be careful that we're attracting a lot of people, right? We're attracting a lot of people with wealth and we're getting, seeing signs of, you know, I like to call it the wealth bullies, right? And we're seeing it now because we're tied up in litigation on floating homes on the river, right? We have clear ordinances and, you know, we saw it at the river mouth, you know, many years ago, trying to run the township into the ground financially. You know, we have to stand together, right? And to a certain extent, if there is divisiveness, and I agree with the mayor, but I think council has made wonderful progress. When I first started a year ago, I was horrified, but I think over the last year, it's, we've made amazing progress of coming together and I think it's okay for us to be apart and different on issues. But, you know, at the end of the day, we vote and we move forward. But, you know, we have to stay together as a council and as a community to make sure that we uphold the regulations and the laws in this town equally and fairly. And we're starting to see signs, right? For some of that's breaking and I think that that's a big threat to our community.
Thank you, Joe. Russ?
I'm going to sound like a broker record, but it's the people and the natural beauty of the community which has been given to us and which I have to pass along in the best condition and shape that I can. It's the people that really make the community. I mean, that's not even something that I think even has to be discussed, other than the fact that the community is important in the fact that, as John mentioned, with his wife's passing and I've experienced it too, currently with some folks in town that are struggling and need help. And to see people that are new to the community just literally come out of the woodwork and help people without any expectation of return is just amazing to me. And I've seen that over my entire life and I just, I contribute to that. That's what makes the town. And I'm not sure Sagatuck's really unique in that because we do things that I think a lot of communities do. It's just we do it without asking for any recognition. People just get it done and we're just good community members. But I will say there is a difference in this community. I served on a council back in the 90s and into early 2000s and it's different. Whether it's social media or something else, I'm not sure. But there's a certain level of divisiveness in this community that I mentioned earlier that I've personally experienced as well as a lack of respect for differing opinions. There's always been arguments on council, there's always been differences, but the difference today is that there's eye rolls and there's just different body language and stuff that just doesn't speak well to the community. And I think that's what people see when they watch meetings or they come to meetings. And I never practiced that, I like to be above that and I think it's something that we need to continue to work on.
Thank you, Russ. Now, I am going to give you a few minutes to compose your closing.